Good evening. This annual organizational meeting of September 12, 2016, of the Dubuque County School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Byteam?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Ms. Seager?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
Thank you. We are joined tonight by a great group out of Bryant Elementary, Ms. McCarron, and her group's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'm Brooke, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Meredith, and I am in fifth grade.
I'm Barrett, and I am in third grade.
I'm Lauren, and I'm in third grade.
I am Brooks, and I am in second grade.
I am Sophia, and I'm in first grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great job. Good job.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 8, 2016, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 8, 2016, as submitted. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Red carpet recognition.
Good evening, and thanks for having us. It's the class of 2020 members. If you want to introduce yourselves, just stand in front of the mic, give us your name, and then scoot over a little bit. Daniel, you can start.
I'm Daniel Ibarra.
I'm Colton Ryan Gaines.
I'm Jack Coker.
I'm Lorne Barnes.
I'm Brian Keck.
I'm Sam Scales.
I'm Ethan McCott.
Thank you. One of the things we like to do with our incoming class, this year we were surprised and felt very old when we recognized this was the class of 2020 that will be graduating. So we have a blown-up commitment to graduate diploma, so to speak, that all the class members sign. We hang that in the student entrance at Hempstead High School, so it's there for all four years. And it's a great picture opportunity at graduation. We take it down to five flags four years from now, and kids point out their name and tell us that they made it. So one of the ways in which we pull students from whatever middle school they're coming to into the Mustang class of 2020. So if we could have Mr. Ryan Gaines, the Board President, and Board Secretary come up and sign this for us, we'll keep it displayed proudly while other members of Hempstead High School.
I recognize there was a lot of pressure following those Bryant kids to be able to get that introduction part right, though you guys did stellar first step towards graduating.
Thank you. If they could get a quick picture with you, that would be awesome. Oh, Shark, introduce yourself.
I'm Shark Khan.
All right, come on, Shark. Get in the picture.
Keep going that way. Keep going that way. See him, get over, get him over to the side maybe. Guy slide up front here a little bit. There he is.
Shark, there you go. Daniel, find a guy. All right. Thank you.
Tomorrow, if you respect it, it's going to be the same. Let me do that real quick.
Congratulations. Get them.
Tomorrow's the first day of our Respect Retreat that we've been running for...
Same four years, right?
Five or six years now, so we split the freshman class into two, and so we'll do a couple hundred of them tomorrow and kind of spend the day getting to know each other, kind of having some icebreakers and some breakdown things, and talk about what kind of school they would like to attend and what they can do to make that happen. So we have about 80 upperclassmen that will come and assist in small group discussion, and so they're in for a real retreat over the next couple of days. Thanks for having us today. Thanks.
You can all go home and do your homework. Special English, right, Colton?
Colton. Especially that tall blond guy.
Now, Brian Keck is the kid that makes, has been making regular appearances here for years because of the spelling bees.
Well, and the entrepreneurial competition.
Oh, okay.
Brings us to Board Salutes.
All right, Mr. President, I'll start. A board salute goes to all district staff involved in the driftless farm-to-school crawl this past Saturday. The event featured a location at the Alta Vista campus, highlighting school gardens in our district, as well as the work of the Food and Nutrition Services to use locally-sourced food whenever possible. As a partner, the district also helped publicize the event, and a few lucky attendees got to enjoy smoothies that were blended, power-blended by our superintendent and Board President pedaling a bike, and I understand one did a little bit better than the other.
Well, no, I'm just saying my smoothies got made a lot faster than somebody else's. But he had hecklers. I didn't have hecklers. He already had a stressful environment. They were back. Faster, 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 like you mean it.
We want to also thank Foremounts and the Dubuque County Extension Office for their work in coordinating the entire effort, and I know some teachers were also allowed to be guests last night at the dinner that was held at Foremounts, and I attended that dinner. And it's a great event if anybody can ever get to it again next year, so kudos.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
I have one I'd like to say, or we would like to say congratulations to last year's class of 2016 for outstanding work on the ACT test. The district recently received an ACT report that we are pleased to see that our district-wide average shows students achieving above the state average in scores. Our student scores also exceed the state average in college readiness indicators. The ACT is just one measure of academic success, and we always strive to improve. We are pleased to see strong performance by our students. Congratulations to the class of 2016 and many teachers who contributed to this success.
Thank you.
Mr. President, in case anyone hasn't noticed, since last time we met as a board, we have successfully kicked off another school year. It's hard to believe we're already three weeks into the year. A board salute goes out to staff across the district for their work in getting students enrolled and welcoming them back to a new school year. Thanks also goes to the many staff members who worked diligently in the summer months to ensure that our facilities were updated, technology was ready, students were registered, and we were prepared to start the year on a positive note.
Fantastic. Any others?
No.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Are there any persons wishing to address the board at this time?
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order, return to regular session. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any Board members wishing to remove any items within that agenda for a separate consideration? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to the Facilities Support Services Committee Report. Mr. Byteam?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a number of change orders associated with projects through the summer months, and then a couple of completions, which we'll be reading through today. So I ask you to be patient and bear with me. I move the Board of Education to approve change order number one to McLean Excavating on the transportation parking improvement projects and the increased amount of $56,953.75.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to McLean Excavating on the transportation parking improvements project and the increased amount of $56,953.75. Any discussion?
Just one comment on this, Mr. President, that this and the other change orders relating to excavating have to do with the nature of Dubuque soils, and oftentimes additional fill is necessary, and so these change orders are tied to that particular issue.
Great. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Move the Board of Education to approve change order number two to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC on the Hoover Bus Drive Improvements Project and the increased amount of $6,858.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number two to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC on the Hoover Bus Drive Improvements Project and the increased amount of $6,858. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move the Board of Education to approve change order number two to McDermott Excavating on the Irving Parking Improvements Project and the increased amount of $54,137.77.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number two to McDermott Excavating on the Irving Parking Improvements Project and the increased amount of $54,137.77. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Move the Board of Education to approve change order number one to Geese Roofing Company on the Eisenhower Gymnasium Roof Replacement Project and the increased amount of $3,762.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Geese Roofing Company on the Eisenhower Gymnasium Roof Replacement Project and the increased amount of $3,762. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of Education to approve change order number two to Geese Roofing Company on the Eisenhower and Jefferson Roof Damage Repair Project in the decreased amount of $2,484.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number two to Geese Roofing Company on the Eisenhower and Jefferson Roof Damage Repairs Project in the decreased amount of $2,484. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move the Board of Education to approve the agreement with IIWPC for professional services for the Alta Vista Campus Boiler Replacement Project in the amount of $27,850.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with IIWPC for professional services for the Alta Vista Campus Boiler Replacement Project in the amount of $27,850. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a question. Is that boiler, or whatever, is that, what is the timeline on it, first of all? Is it by this winter? Is it built?
It could be a several-year project. The boiler will actually be replaced summer of 2017 using our PEPAL funds, and that'll get up and running, and then in the summer of 2018, we'll come back and ask you to deconstruct that existing building there. It's an important project because the building is nearing the end of its life, the boiler is 40-plus years and getting near its end of life. It used to heat the existing Alta Vista Center and the Loris Building. That used to be connected. So it's a very large furnace heating device, and it's not efficient.
So it's kind of oversized.
It's oversized and outdated, and we're looking forward to getting that replaced.
So we don't heat the Loris Building right now.
That's correct. This is for our property only.
Pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education to approve the agreement with IIWPC for professional services for the Eisenhower Cooling System Replacement Project in the amount of $9,850.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with IIWPC for professional services for the Eisenhower Cooling System Replacement Project in the amount of $9,850. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education to adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with ProTrak and Tennis Incorporated. Whereas on April 11, 2016, the Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with ProTrak and Tennis Incorporated of Bennington, Nebraska, contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as the Hempstead Senior High School Tennis Court Repairs Project. And whereas on November 9, 2015, the Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with Selzer Schaefer Architects, Architect, for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on August 24, 2016, Architect filed a certificate with the Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor has substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas the architect now submitted subsequent reports, change order, bonds, pay, application to Dubuque Community School District recommending the project be accepted by the district is finally complete. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education on the Dubuque Community School District, Section 1, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted; Section 2, that said public improvements are hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with the said plans, specifications, and form of contract; Section 3, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with ProTrak and Tennis Incorporated is hereby determined to be $10,795. Section 4, that $10,795 of the total contract cost yet paid will be retained for a period of 30 days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to requirements of the Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund and/or claims are on file, the entire unpaid fund shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
It's like that marathon runner in that 25 mile.
Only tripped over one barrier.
Did well. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with ProTrak and Tennis Incorporated as read. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education to adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for public improvement contract with Jim Geese Commercial Roofing Incorporated. Whereas on May 9, 2016, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Jim Geese Commercial Roofing Incorporated, Dubuque, Iowa, contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as forum roof repairs project. And whereas on May 9, 2016, the Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with IIWPC, Architect, for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on August 8, 2016, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District to certify that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract plan and specifications. Whereas the architect now has submitted subsequent report, change order, bonds and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending the project be accepted by the district is finally complete. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Dubuque Community School District, Section 1, that said report and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted; Section 2, that said public improvements is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance to said plans, specifications, and form of contract; Section 3, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Jim Geese Commercial Roofing Incorporated is hereby determined to be $7,995. Section 4, that, there's a pattern here. Section 4, that $7,995 of the total contract cost yet paid shall be retained for a period of 30 days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund, and if no claims are on file, the entire unpaid fund shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
Yeah, I'm reminded of the word problems in algebra.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Jim Geese Commercial Roofing, Inc., as read. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
One more. I move the Board of Education to adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Geisler Brothers Company. Whereas on June 13, 2016, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Geisler Brothers Company of Dubuque, Iowa, contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as Sageville Elementary School Roof Repair Project. And whereas on August 2, 2016, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with IIWPC, Architect, for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on August 8, 2016, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said project improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas, the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order, bonds and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the product be accepted by the district is finally complete. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education, Dubuque Community School District, Section 1, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted; Section 2, that said public improvements is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with said plans, specifications, and form of contract; Section 3, the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Geisler Brothers Company is hereby determined to be $5,532.79. Section 4, that $5,532.79 of the total contract cost yet paid shall be retained for a period of 30 days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are on file, the entire unpaid fund shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Geisler Brothers Company as read. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Byteam. Grab some water.
Mr. Donahue, I have a suggestion.
Yes.
It's taken about 10 minutes to read those three resolutions. 10 minutes that Paul Kurt will never recapture again. We've stolen 10 minutes from Paul Kurt's life. Would it be possible for us to pass, I like the fact, in the interest of transparency and process, that we do thoroughly cover this. What if we passed a school district policy that contained all of the required verbiage in here, and then we were to simply make a motion for these things where we refer back to that public policy, only highlighting then, take, you know, 30 seconds, and highlight all the variable information for each of those motions? Is there any reason why we could not do? I would even argue that it might be better in the interest of transparency.
Kevin's got his microphone ready.
Because then you'd be, uh-oh. Because I'm thinking you would be highlighting the key information for everybody so it doesn't get lost in the three or four minutes of verbiage per motion.
Is there a statute?
Yeah, Kevin, pray it fills it in a way.
We consulted with Ollers about those motions, and that is their recommendation that all of those pieces be read at each board meeting on each public improvement project.
Yeah, you know, and this is not the way that we've done it in the past. My guess, I understand Ollers would say that, for those of you listening, that's the legal firm that refers, that gives advice on how to do this stuff, because they're not going to give us advice that can be viewed as something that would get them into trouble.
It's worth looking into. I think that's worth the question.
You know, I wonder, if we have 330 school districts in Iowa, my guess is not all of them are doing it this way, and we just might be able to save wear and tear.
I think it's a really good point to do the research and bring it to support services in a couple of weeks.
I understand there's a reason why we go to that way, Kevin, so I appreciate you highlighting that. I just wonder if maybe we can find a better way. I worry about Craig.
Well, it's a lot of face time for Craig.
It's a lot of face time for Craig.
A lot of face time in these meetings.
Somehow my face hangs down on a piece of paper. It's hardly face time. Thank you so much.
A lot of head time. Upper head.
High forehead here. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ed Programs Policy Strategy Committee Report. Ms. Ryan?
Just a little highlight. We're going to, throughout the whole year, and starting this year and going forward, we're going to just talk about the effects of school start time on students. Look at research, see if we want to do something about it. We are by all means not doing anything, but we are just looking at it in lieu of, we heard Iowa City has changed their start time, so we're going to kind of follow what they're doing and just kind of see what the impact is. So that'll just be an ongoing discussion throughout the year, here and there. We're really putting together the D-Silt team and looking at that structure to see how we can make it a little bit more parent-friendly, to get the parent input with that. And then one new policy that we put into place was animals in the classroom for service animals and therapy animals, which have always been in place, but now we, or been used, I should say, and now we just have an official policy that follows the guidelines, which we have already kind of been following along, which is good to see. And that's really the highlights.
I would just add, before all your emails fill up with people wondering about new start times, that's a long process.
It is nothing happening.
Starting takes a lot of community input, a lot of parent input, a lot of board input, so, but we need to get started to take a peek at it and see if it makes sense for us, so.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Can I read it first?
Yeah, there's, I've got a couple of proclamations, one on attendance awareness and one on deaf awareness, so I'll read those, and then we can make the motions to approve those. So the first one, "Whereas good attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and we are committed to dedicating our resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates with a focus starting as early as kindergarten. And whereas chronic absence is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. And whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths in each community. And whereas chronic absence predicts lower third-grade reading proficiency, course failure, and eventual dropout. It weakens our communities and our local economy. And whereas chronic absence exacerbates the achievement gap and undermines efforts to improve schools, since it's hard to measure improvement in classroom instruction if students are not in class to benefit from them. And whereas schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine why they are missing school and what would help them attend more regularly. And whereas chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Donahue, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim September 2016 as attendance awareness month. We commit, hereby commit, to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Signed this 12th day of September 2016."
I move that the Board of Education approve the attendance awareness proclamation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the attendance awareness proclamation. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Second proclamation, "Whereas the Dubuque Community School District serves over 70 students who are deaf and hard of hearing, and whereas these students are engaged, enthusiastic learners who persevere and thrive in their quest for knowledge, and whereas dedicated teachers of students who are deaf and hard of hearing, educational interpreters, audiologists from within the district and Keystone AEA provide students with the communication assistance they need to find success in school. And whereas parents and families of students who are deaf and hard of hearing provide unconditional... support in both their students' school experiences and all areas of their life. And whereas we are committed to provide continued high-quality support and a first-rate education for our students who are deaf and hard of hearing. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Donahue, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, excuse me, do hereby proclaim September 2016 as Deaf Awareness Month, signed this 12th day of September 2016.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Deaf Awareness Month Proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Deaf Awareness Month Proclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education establish regular meetings of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at 5:30 PM at the Forum. And the strategic plan meetings for the fourth Monday in October, February, and May at 5:30 in the Forum, at the Forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education establish the regular meetings of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at 5:30 PM at the Forum. And strategic planning meetings for the fourth Monday in October, February, and May at 5:30 PM at the Forum.
Are all the strategic planning meetings all scheduled at 5:30?
Correct.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of Education name Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name the Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education name Firsty Crew, Jurgens, and Sudmeyer, PC, as the official legal counsel of record.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name Firsty Crew, Jurgens, and Sudmeyer, PC, as the official legal counsel of record. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Move that the Board of Education approve the following banks as depositories for district funds not to exceed $50 million each. American Trust and Savings Bank, Bankers Trust, Dubuque Bank and Trust, Fidelity Bank and Trust, Premier Bank, and U.S. Bank.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the following banks as depositories for district funds not to exceed $50 million each. American Trust and Savings Bank, Bankers Trust, Dubuque Bank and Trust, Fidelity Bank and Trust, Premier Bank, and U.S. Bank. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action for student number 817760 at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action for student 817760 at this time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to our organizational part of our meeting. Just a reminder, we'll nominate and elect the positions of President and Vice President, and we will also nominate a Board Secretary as well. Just a couple reminders, you can nominate yourself. You can nominate somebody else. Hopefully you've talked to them and they know that. And if we get, there are separate motions depending upon the number of nominations, so I think that's pretty straightforward.
And this is where Joni Presider, is she the Presider?
No.
Okay, I'd like to open up. I'd like to nominate Mr. Michael Donahue as President of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education.
Second.
Yeah, I'm sure that's, just to be clear. We make the nomination and then we make the motion.
Okay, so you nominate.
So, okay, so we've got one nomination. Are there?
Is there any other nominations?
Can we have a long, extended discussion on the merits, the strengths and weaknesses of the aforementioned candidates?
I do have a PowerPoint loaded from my mom that has certain examples of misdoings, et cetera. Thank you.
I think Mike's done a very awesome job.
I move that the Board of Education elect Mike Donahue as President.
Close the nominations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the nominations.
Oh.
And cast a unanimous ballot of Mike Donahue as President. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay. I would like to make the nomination of Tammy Ryan as Vice President. Wait, do I pull on?
Oh, we have to square him in.
We have to square him in, okay. Sorry, Tammy. Didn't change her mind.
Not to wait.
Did you release your health records?
Not yet. My tax returns have been audited for another year or so. Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I do. Well, thank you, Johnny. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Where were we?
Vice.
Ms. Ryan has been nominated as Vice President.
Don't have to state it again. I'd like to nominate Tammy Ryan as Vice President of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education.
Second.
Want to make the motion?
There's only one nomination.
I make a motion that we close the nominations.
And cast unanimous ballot.
This is a great little joint motion we've got going on of Tammy Ryan as Vice President.
We help one another.
Yes. So, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot of Tammy Ryan as Vice President. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Ryan?
Health records, tax returns.
That's right. Health records, same deal. All right. Yes. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Board Secretary.
And so, since nobody else wants this job.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Joni Lucas as Secretary.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Joni Lucas as Secretary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Lucas.
Well, that was the easiest decision. I mean, they're-
Well, that's what I said. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary Treasurer in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will, but it's just for secretary.
It's just secretary.
It's changed.
I do. So you get two jobs?
We've been doing this before. Is this new?
Yes.
This is new, yep.
Oh, I see. I stand corrected then. Forget I ever said treasurer.
I'm beginning to have concerns about our presidential selection. Like to.
I was just reading the teleprompter.
He's nervous. He just got elected.
That's right. Lot of pressure.
Let's go on to Board, let's go on to Board Treasurer. I recommend that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as Treasurer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Keller. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Treasurer in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations. Put that on your resume. You've got now another job. Thank you, Kevin. All right. Thank you all. Board member, questions, concerns, comments?
Just a reminder about the Pebble vote tomorrow. The polling locations are listed online. They were listed in today's paper. I believe the polls are open from, was it 7 till?
8:00 PM.
7:00 AM till 8:00 PM? Also, just strategic planning meeting, was that coming up again, just reminder for everybody? Stan?
So, actually two meetings coming up. Strategic planning meeting in October, but a facilities 10-year plan on work session on the 21st of this month at 2:00. 2:30, thank you. 2:30 is public meeting.
Thanks. Mr. Burton?
Having exhibited concern for both Paul Kurt and Craig Byten, I'd also like to extend deepest heartfelt sympathies to Ed Anderson. The last 20 hours have been very difficult for Arizona Cardinals fans, so.
Ed, I'm sorry. Could have adjourned. I had a chance to just adjourn and I didn't, then I should have known better.
Well, I'll throw out there, I know somebody out there has a birthday tomorrow, I believe I saw in the paper, and it's a big one. I won't name any names.
Tammy is deer.
But it does make her halfway to 100.
Okay, that's where we're-
Not going to mention any names, but her initials are Tammy Deer.
Can you help me with that math? Anything on the administrative side?
No, just to reiterate the importance of the Pebble vote. It's important and that people can vote at any of the locations, so it's not a matter of knowing where you vote. Just go online, find out where the polling sites are, and you're allowed to vote at any of those issues. And then I guess one thing, it's more of an administrative salute than anything, while we've had a great first several weeks of school, it has been relatively warm, especially in some of our un-air-conditioned buildings, middle schools, senior high where instructions going on. Even on those days where it's maybe mid-70s, but the humidity is 90-plus percent, it is pretty, pretty rough conditions for our staff and our students. In my visiting those buildings, even in those conditions, students are engaged and teachers are doing fantastic job of creating lessons in, under less than ideal situations. It's a hard decision to release early or cancel school. Maybe we're on the borderline a couple of times, but we did, staff did a great job of making, making the best of those days, so.
That's a great point.
Stan, can we, have we, are we continuing to use the portable air conditioning units?
We have several buildings where those are in use. We struggle to have those because of the way they are vented in our, in our multi-story buildings. And they really, the portable air conditioners are probably, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, or Charlie, they're worth about five degrees and a reduction in the humidity. So it's not a great, it's certainly the same as being in an air-conditioned place, but in some key locations, we do have those portable units.
But we are still using them in some of the singles stories.
Yes, in the single, Eisenhower Hoover, but-
They can only do so much.
They owe you so much.
And in some of the, the non-air-conditioned schools, I think there's an ability to, in the evening, to bring in the cool air. Is that effective at all, or does it just bring in the humidity?
You're bringing in, you're replacing humid air with humid air. Just to give you an example, last week when it was mid-70s outside, 90% of many classrooms were at 85, 86, 87 degrees. Of course, you had the humidity. But again, dedicated staff, good students, and a lot of positive things happening in those buildings. We just have to weigh the loss of educational time with, is this a comfort issue or a health dangerous situation, so.
And like a lot of, lot of school districts, we're now reaching that point where we've got what, roughly what percentage of our students?
60, 65% of our students attended an air-conditioned facility.
You got a third drive in, two-thirds.
And the good news is, looking at the long-range forecast, you know, it's three days that were pretty rough, but I think we're through that. Low's in the 50s, highs in the mid-70s for the next 15 days.